At this time, I'd like to call the Lee County Board of Education Meeting for May 14, 2019 to order. At this time, I will call for a moment of silence. Amen. At this time, it is my pleasure to call on some of our Broadway Elementary School students to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and you can stand right there. And if we're all standing, and it's the students leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Moving right along, moving to our Lee County Schools' Vision Statement.
Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovation, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Thank you, and moving on to our Code of Ethics for School Board Members.
The Board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the Board must adhere to an accepted Code of Ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the Board. We must avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the Board. We must avoid the misuse of public funds. We must avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts, and finally, avoid making confidential information public. The Board accepts the Code of Conduct as established by the North Carolina School Board Association.
Thank you Board Member Womack, and thank you Board Member Dr. Smith. Moving right along to the approval of our agenda for today's meeting. Do I have a motion for the approval?
Chairman Kelly, entertain something with the Board, please.
Yes ma'am.
Looking over the agenda, we have under the Consent Agenda, Item 4, which is Budget Amendments. I'd like to make a motion that we pull that and put it under New Business so that it can be explained. I've looked over those sheets. They're involving very large amounts of money, and to be quite honest, you know, I have a pretty good background in school finance. There's not everything I understand about those. I'd really like just an explanation for them before we vote on them, or before I, you know, vote on them. I'd like to really understand them.
So, there's a motion to approve the agenda with the adendum that Board Member Sutton has presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. There's a motion on the floor to approve the agenda as presented, moving the Budget Amendments from approval of Consent, I mean Consent Agenda, to New Business. All in favor? I assume I've seen aye?
Aye.
Aye, and then, and then those opposed? Like sign?
Nay.
So, right now, I have three, one, and the other nays.
Nay.
Abstentions?
No.
For abstention? Okay. And then, that's three, three, and then the only one I don't think I've heard from was Christine.
Um, no.
Okay. Motion fails four, two, three. Okay. So, the agenda is approved as presented. Okay.
Point of wonder, Mr. Chair, could you clarify what we just voted down? We voted on discussing the budget amendment. I just wanted them explained. That's all I asked for, just an explanation of them.
So, at this time, what we can do, if there's any questions concerning the budget amendments, when we get to the approval for that, you'll have a chance maybe to ask it at those time. All right. Moving along to approval of the amendments for Regular Board Meeting 4/9/2019, Mercy Board Meeting 4/26, Student Transfer Appeal, and then 5/7 meetings as well. Do I have a motion to approve all the minutes as stated?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for April the 9th, April the 26th, and May the 7th.
Is there a second for those?
Second.
All right. All in favor of approving the minutes as presented? Say aye. Uh-huh. All opposed? Motion passes. All right. Moving on to my Chairman's Report. I would like to say once again, congratulations to all of our Teacher of the Year nominees from each of our schools, and once again, congratulations to our Teacher of the Year that was selected last night, and I will leave Andy to provide more details on that. Also, moving along, Jan Hayes has officially been appointed as our Board of Trustees nominee. She was approved by our Board, and then she has once again been approved by Hornet County and Chatham County Boards of Educations as well. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and it did my heart really good to see the community outpour for our teachers and their appreciation. I know some schools were served lunch and meals, and each community showed our teachers what it means, how much they're appreciated. So, again, it was a great Teacher Appreciation Week. That being said, I would also like to point out that this week is Law Enforcement Appreciation Week, and I appreciate definitely all of our SROs at each school, and what they do for our kids, and for our safety of our students, staff, faculty, and students. Moving right along. At this time, oh, one other thing. We're almost there. For our students, our staff, and our faculty, the finish line is close. Please keep your head up, and keep your, keep your head up when it comes to running towards that finish line, and I'm sure you'll do well when it comes to final exams, and the summer is almost here. At this time...
Mr. Chairman, could I make one comment, please?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to commend the senior staff for the event last night. It was fantastic, and also to all the Teacher of the Year candidates, and I'm sorry if I'm stealing your thunder, Andy, but it was a fantastic evening, and the passion for education was very evident last night, and it was just, it was good, it was good to have, to be here last night, so thank you.
All righty. At this time, I would like to call for Principal Secor to introduce his students, and one note I'd like to add to it, especially to the students, that I am a Broadway Wildcat alumni as well. So, Principal Secor.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, and Board Members, Dr. Bryan. The students we have here tonight are members of our Recorder Club at Broadway Elementary School. Ms. Temple, their director, was charged with developing some ways for our students to perform in the school and in the community when she was hired last year in October. She took that challenge on immediately, had her first concert in April of that year. Many of these students took part in that at that time, and these students have auditioned for the opportunity to perform as part of the Recorder Club. We have 4th and 5th grade students tonight. This year, they've performed in a school concert at a local retirement home at the Lee County Arts Day, and they're here tonight, and I think you'll enjoy their performance. Ms. Temple, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's give another round of applause one more time. Thank you for your hard work and dedication to the students and to Mrs. Temple, the music teacher. Thank you for coming tonight, and I know several of you are headed to other school events at this point, such as the Eastly Sports Banquet and other places you need to get to, so thank y'all for coming tonight. At this time, that includes my Chairman's Report, and I will gladly turn it over to the Superintendent, Dr. Andy Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great performance from Broadway. Saw you at the Fine Arts Day on that Saturday a couple weeks ago. Y'all did a great job there as well. Tonight, would like to reiterate the comments that have already been made about last night's Teacher of the Year Ceremony. First off, we were able to sort of give Katie Eddings, our last year's Teacher of the Year, an opportunity to be recognized one more time for her efforts, and she was one of eight finalists for State Teacher of the Year. Very excited for what Katie has done and continues to do on statewide level as Teacher of the Year for Lee County. And we also crowned a new winner last night, Leslie Cotrell from Greenwood Elementary School, who is an excellent teacher there, works a lot with thinking skills and habits of mind, and AIG support. She was very humble in winning the award last night, and I thought all of our finalists from each of the schools represented their schools well, and we know Leslie will represent Lee County very well as she goes on to the next level for regional competition. So, we're very, very proud of her. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Johnny Waller to come forward for the Clean School of the Month.
Mr. Chair, Board Members, Dr. Brown, again, this month, all 16 of our schools had a grade of 90% or better. For our top seven, we had one at 96, one at 97, four with a score of 98, and Sandley Middle School with a score of 99.
Thank you so much. We appreciate being recognized as Clean School of the Month. This is really an honor this year. Our team has worked so hard. We're a new team on our custodial staff, and I have two of those members here. This is Kristy Maddox, and I also have Andrew Carnegie. Our head custodian is Monica Halls, and she was not able to be here tonight, but we also have Andrew Oriana that was out today with a kidney stone, so please keep him in your prayers. If you've suffered that, you understand that's some bad stuff. And we have had one of our members out for a good portion of the year, but has just come back with us, and that's Alice McKeever. These people work so hard from very early in the morning, probably a lot earlier than most of us get up, because all of them drive buses, and then they keep our school safe and clean. They are the first ones to say hello to our children, and the last ones to say goodbye to them in the afternoon, and I could not do all that I do, and our school could not be as wonderful as it is without them. So, I thank them for being here tonight and for all they do every day. Thank you.
Congratulations.
With our accountability update, we're obviously in the last few weeks of school. We'll be beginning testing across the course of the next few weeks. Everybody's really working hard to get ready for that, and we'll just try to finish the year on a strong note. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Moving along to our committee reports, to CNI with Dr. Kobel.
We've had two CNI meetings over the past month. The first one was at Eastly, the Middle School Curriculum and Instruction Meeting. Board members present were Stephen Kobel and Pam Sutton. Among the things that were discussed was a revised middle school rubric. Gail Smith gave a brief update on the math rubric for middle school advanced classes. Math Rubric is a guideline for teachers and principals to use this year when deciding which students need to be scheduled for advanced 6th, 7th, or 8th grade math, or Math 1 at 6th, 7th, and 8th grades. Along with that, we had an AIG update. Gail Smith gave a brief AIG update. She talked about the targets for middle schools in 2019, 2020. She'll present the final revisions to the Elementary CNI Committee on May the 8th and seek approval to send the plan to the Board for final approval before sending on to the state by July the 15th. Best Practices. Anika Squires presented the MTSS Data Team. Will use the CECO program to first identify students that need additional support by reviewing classroom behavior data and teacher recommendations. Secondly, the CECO would provide support to students by matching them with a mentor, giving them daily goals, and their teacher will be able to track on a checklist. Lastly, if necessary, will transition the kids to programs based on data collected from daily checklist, and this is a part of the MTSS, the support programs for children that are in need, and it's a pretty good program. At any rate, the meeting was adjourned at 4:35 PM. The next meeting we had was the Elementary CNI Meeting. Called to order at Broadway Elementary School in the Media Center. Present board members were Stephen Kobel and Pam Sutton. During the meeting, Dr. Andy Bryan mentioned that Peyton Holland from Skills USA spoke at the Chamber of Commerce Public Policy Meeting, along with our own Brandon Ramirez from Lee County Schools. Again, Gail Smith gave a brief AIG update to the revised AIG Identification Criteria for K through 12. Also at this meeting, we had the Alternative Accountability Model Options for 2019, 2020, presented by Dr. Rob Dietrich. He presented the Alternative Accountability Model Options for Bragg Street, Floyd Knight, and Warren Williams. It is a consensus of the committee to send the model to the Board for approval at the June 2019 meeting, and that will be placed on the Consent Agenda. Under the Best Practices Presentation, and I've been doing this for a little while in the schools, we were treated with something exceptional, something, I don't suppose is revolutionary, but it was, it was exceptional. The Broadway Elementary Presentation was using works of art to inspire reading and writing, and it was one of the better presentations I've seen this year. It was used to assist in building speaking and listening skills, promote critical and analytical thinking. Furthermore, the teacher and student discourse provided a segue that fostered social and emotional growth. I think this program's going to take off and do very well. The program was adjourned at 4:50 PM. We will have another called CNI meeting between now and June the 9th for our CTE discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kobel. Moving right along to Facilities in Technology with Dr. Lynn Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is my microphone working?
Say something.
Can you hear me? I guess it's working. F&amp;T Committee met on April 25th in the Heinz Building. The first item on our agenda was a YMCA addendum to include WB Wicker School. It was a consensus of the committee to approve the YMCA addendum to include WB Wicker School, and that obviously means that the YMCA will be providing services to our children at Wicker School, and we're delighted for that to happen. The Superintendent also informed this committee that although we do not have a formal declaration in place, but the Boys and Girls Club will be allowed to use the new gym, or the old gym, the repaired gym at Wicker School, when and if they reopen the Church Street location. And according to Policy 9310, which is Names on Building Plaque for Wicker Elementary School, it was a consensus of the committee for administration to develop the building plaques and present at the next committee meeting on May 23rd, and of course, those plaques will be made in accordance with the Policy 9310. Chris McNeil, who's in the background, I see, reported WB Wicker School construction is on time. There's, there are still no change orders, and for a construction project of this magnitude, that is just amazing. Congratulations to Chris and his staff. The next F&amp;T meeting will be on May 23rd, 2019, 4 o'clock in the Heinz Building.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. And then, turning back over once again to Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance also, Committee also met on April 25th. The first item on our agenda was a continuing discussion of finances that the Finance Committee plans to look at on a monthly basis. A previous presentation by Finance Director included information on Funds 1, 2, 3, and 4, and we asked, and 5, and we asked her to add to that Fund 8, which includes information on our unencumbered and encumbered bond balance. So, that, this will be displayed on the FYI part of our agenda each month, so if anybody wants to see this in advance of the meeting, just go to FYI button, and that will be there on a monthly basis. The second item was involved the copier and printer bid recommendations. Dr. Waller has sent out RFPs for bids. We got bids from Toshiba and Sharp, and they both came and gave presentations to the copier committee. Dr. Dietrich expressed to the group from technology standpoint that Sharp would save money and was a better project. Sharp presented updated copiers with wireless copying, and where's Dr. Dietrich? So, I mean, that's, that's all right. I think the objective is to eliminate printers eventually and go to, we're trying to eliminate the printers and use... Go to copiers. Got you. Toshiba said they could add all the options to the machines, but that would cost more money, so it was a recommendation of the committee to select the Sharp offer. Mr. McCracken made the motion, and the contract is going to be awarded to Toshiba, or to Sharp for three years, and that it will be under your new business item, and it's a fairly expensive project. And of course, the Board expenses are there for everybody to view. Our next meeting, Mr. Chairman, will be on May 23rd at 5 o'clock in the Heinz Building.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Thank you for that report. Moving on into Policy. Board Member Womack.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Policy Committee met on the 21st of May, and we are making the following recommendations for policies for the first reading, and all of these changes came from the North Carolina School Board Association. It's Policy Number 4240-7312, Child Abuse and Reports and Investigation. Policy 4700, Student Records. Policy 7100, Recruitment and Selection of Personnel Policy, 7130, Licensor. And Policy 7940, Classified Personnel Suspension and Dismissal. Therefore, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the following policies: 4240-7312, 4700-7100, 7130, and 7940. Our next meeting will be on June the 4th in the Heinz Building.
Thank you, Board Member Mrs. Womack, and thank you to all for those committee reports. Moving on to our Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right. There's a motion and approval. Is there any discussion?
Can I ask questions now?
Yes, ma'am. And I think I'm also going to say this at the same time, concerning Budget Amendments, correct? That it's my understanding that these were ways to actually end up saving us money, because we're able to move money around from grants and different things, correct, Kelly? So, when it comes to that, now since we have the floor for discussion, Kelly, if you don't mind, if you'll come to the front, but it's my understanding, like, like I just said, some of these amendments were because we got grant funding, and we're able to move that grant funding to, to a position to cover that cost, which then opened up more funding for another item. So, any particular questions at this time?
My particular question I had was on the third sheet. My particular question I had was on the third sheet, the federal.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And like I said, I understand school finance pretty well, but when I looked at this, I had a question because, and it may be just the way the sheet's written, and I just don't understand it yet. I just wondered why the top part indicated decreases in the amount of over $252,000, but when you get to the bottom, it says that those were increased, and the number has gotten bigger. So I wasn't sure how this matched up with the federal grant money, or I'm sorry, the federal funding money that's in the middle column. That's my question.
Okay. That is the only budget amendment, if you'll see, it has an increase and a decrease column.
Right, I see that.
And so that is an error on my part. It should have been an increase.
Okay.
But that is, that was additional grants that we were able to obtain. That PRC 105 is the new TSI and the CSI money that has come in. And we will be using that this summer. And then the 109 is.
For professional development.
Yes, for professional development.
Which is what it has to be used for?
Yeah, it has to be for those particular subgroups. And then the PRC 109, we had received that last year, and we were under the impression that we were not going to receive that, and they contacted Dr. Chapl after everyone had submitted and said that there was funds available that they were going to let Lee County submit a grant.
Sure. Right. Okay. Well, thank you for explaining that.
Okay.
And since now that you've explained that it's an error, that it should be in the increase column.
That is correct.
Because I know how federal funding works, and it's very strict in how it's done. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Seeing no other discussion?
Patrick, I just have one question, and one question only. Has this been ran by our board attorney to make sure that we meet the School Board Physical Control Act? Because I know that will be an issue when the audit comes back from previously. But does this meet the Physical Control Act as well?
Dr. Love?
Well, I've gone over it with her several times, and as she explains it to me, I think it complies.
Okay.
Okay. And I actually ran them by Dale. I mean, he looks at them ahead of time, so.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, motion to approve has been presented, and there's a second. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, same as like, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, those opposed? Moving right along into new business, Dr. Smith. Let's move from copiers to printers.
Well, let's make the motion, and then we'll have Dr. Dietrich come up and explain any questions maybe out there. I do move that the Lee County Board of Education award the copier-printer bid to Sharp Business System for three years, beginning July the 1st, 2019.
All right, there's a motion, and needs no second coming from committee. Dr. Dietrich, if anybody have any questions for Dr. Dietrich? Granted, this may be a large amount of money, but I think you're looking towards the future. This may end up saving our school system some money, correct?
Yeah, that is correct. What I see a lot of schools spending a lot of money on right now is if a printer dies, they'll replace a printer. We have a printer just about in every classroom, and we spend a lot of money. The principals are spending a lot of money on toner and printers. And I believe that that is a cost that we can decrease as we remove the printers and add copiers, and then the copiers give us additional functionality. So for example, the copiers will be networked, so they will have the ability to scan the email. They'll have ability to go directly from where the, copy something and send it directly to their Google Drive because they're all networked. So instead of putting out more paper, we're trying to do that, and we're only then, as Sharp explained, we are only paying for whatever comes out of the printer, even with all that additional functionality. So the idea is, and I've already talked to a couple of principals that would like to give this an attempt, is to reduce the printer footprint and enlarge the copier footprint so that we have more shared methods across the district.
By doing so, we can save money and spend that money on our services and spend it in the classroom.
Correct.
Any other discussion from the board?
Will this increase, I'm sorry, will this increase the need for personnel working around a large copier like that?
Well, they, they're not, they're not large printers. I think that is more of a school-based decision on how they would make the decision to use those copiers that are out. For example, one of the abilities that is out there with this company is they have what they call follow-me printing. So essentially, I hit print at my computer. It doesn't matter which copier I go to, I scan my ID card, and it'll come out wherever I'm standing. So it has the ability to possibly reduce personnel, because then the teachers are doing it themselves, depending on what school you are. At the larger high schools, I'd have to talk to the principals about it further to discuss that.
Any other discussion?
You just answered my question in reference to security, because you know I'm going to go there.
Yeah, that's okay.
But the only thing I'd like to know is which, who are going to be your trial schools that's going to do this?
That's going to do this? I am talking about a couple right now. I don't know, the Deep River has talked to me about some interest.
Okay.
And then I'm working with a couple other schools, but right now, they're the most committed, and they haven't exactly jumped in, and we're just in conversation about it.
Okay, thank you.
And I was intrigued with one additional function that you mentioned in committee meeting, is that at some point in time, a number will come up indicating the user, how many trees had been cut down to that point.
Yeah, that's correct.
For those copies you're printing, which I think is extremely interesting.
And if you're really into the kind of techie mode, they even have the ability to do stapleless stapling, to where it crimps the paper, and you can't really pull it apart.
It amazed us. We, Dr. Smith and I, and the rest of the committee, looked at it for five minutes figuring out how it was, but it's amazing, and also the support that Sharp is going to be giving the schools is going to be really good. It was a great presentation.
So Sharp will have a maintenance contract per se with this?
That is part of the deal, as well as they have not only committed that, but also a training regiment to make sure that everyone understands, because this is increasing our functionality with what we are currently doing. Really, a copier right now is you walk up, you scan the email, you scan, make a copy, and that's it, to where this functionality, you've now attached Google Drive to it, you've now attached the ability to analyze your copies before, a lot of wasted money is, you copy something, you look at it and go, man, I really wish I wouldn't have copied that, to where what this does is give you the ability to preview it on a screen, clean it up, correct it, make sure it looks right, and then print it. So that alone saves us money, but that's going to take some training. But they have committed a partnership with us. They have said they will come not only this year, but they will come in future years as we hire new personnel. And that is something that we will hold them to, because training, as everyone up here knows, training is the most important thing if something is going to be used correctly, and end up saving us money in the long run.
So we're saving time, money, and trees. I'm all for it. Any other discussion?
They're training maintenance personnel for it?
No, because Sharp handles all the maintenance. So, right, about the only thing that we are committed to, and correct me if I'm wrong for everyone else who is through, is basically changing out toner. But any service that has to be done to it, that Sharp will take care of, and they have promised a four-hour response time.
There's a motion, there's a second. I mean, we got a motion on the floor. All in favor, same as saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. All right, moving along. Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. All right, moving along to our 2019-2020 Current Expense and Capital Outlay Request and Budget Book. Dr. Andy Bryant.
I will go to the short forms you have for the expansion budget and for the capital budget. These are the same ones that were presented at last month's meeting. The 1% increase for classified and certified staff, also trying to take into account what state raises may be. That may or may not be accurate, depending upon what state legislature does. Some automatic increases in there for retirement hospitalization, which we have no control over, and then some additions for behavior specialists, nurses, classified testing positions at the high school, additional security, CDC middle school position, AIG specialists at the middle school, and an increase for athletic coaching supplements. That's the same budget as was presented last time, last month, and also is very close to what we looked at in the budget work sessions held a couple months ago. If you turn to the capital improvement plan, it remains the same as well for capital request, leases for miserly units, in-house construction, again, security cameras, fire alarms, some athletic female dressing rooms at the two high schools, and a concession facility, technology purchases, mower rotation, upgrade the boiler at Broadway, van and truck purchases, a boiler replacement at the Hines Building, Bragg Street repaving for one of their basketball courts, hot water heaters at Southern Lee, concrete steps at Warren Williams, repaint the basketball court at Southern Lee High School, painting one school, reseal the parking lot at one school, tennis court reconditioning at Southern Lee High School, burst surveillance video in a canopy at Tremway, and some additional buses for transportation at Warren Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Is there a motion to approve the current expense and capital outlay request as presented?
Patrick, could I ask a question first for discussion? I would like to ask.
Once we got the discussion, but yes, go ahead now.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just have a quick question for Dr. Bryant. Considering we do not have the audit, do you see any concerns at all with us submitting the capital overlay and request budget to the county commissioners?
I, we're.
Because we actually thought we would have the audit before this went forward.
I don't think at this time, no, ma'am.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the capital expenses in capital, current, excuse me, current expense in capital lay request?
I make a motion that we approve the current expense in capital overlay request.
Since this isn't coming from a committee, I do need a second.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. At this time, I will call for vote. All in favor of approving the current expense in capital lease, same as saying aye?
Aye.
All they oppose, like sign? Thank you. All right, moving right along. Our next item on the agenda is the board policies first reading. Board, excuse me, Board Member Womack.
I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve Policy 4240-7312, Child Abuse Reports and Investigation, Policy 4700, Student Records, Policy 7100, Recruitment and Selection of Personnel, Policy 7130, Licensor, and Policy 7940, Classified Personnel Suspension and Dismissal.
All right. Thank you for those. There's a motion to approve those for first reading. This is not needs a second coming from committee. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving those board policies for first reading, same as saying aye?
Aye.
Light sign. Board policies passed first reading. Moving along to our 2019-2020 traditional calendar. I know some teachers have expressed concerns to each of us and several board members as well, so I wanted to take the opportunity, and also on your request, to add this to the agenda. I know that we're getting ready to wrap up this year and move into next year. I would, I've entertained those ideas, and so has staff, and I'd like to now open the floor to Mrs. Sutton for your discussion that you want to.
Thank you. I asked that this be put on the agenda because I know a lot of us have been talking to teachers. I've had teachers approach me. In fact, I had a group of teachers approach me after the board meeting in February with concerns about the calendar. And they've sent us some emails, and all of you've got the emails. I originally asked for us to discuss it back in March, I believe on March 12th. And I understand that a meeting took place with a group of representative teachers and Chairman Kelly and Mrs. Hiller. I don't, to my understanding or to my knowledge, we have not been briefed on what happened during that meeting, what concerns the teachers had, how they were answered.
So this agenda item is for the discussion on the calendar?
Right. I'd like to know what feedback they got, because they're still disappointed. I mean, when we got another email from them, they're still, they don't still feel like it's resolved. And I, my biggest concern is the morale issues that it's created, and how can we open communication with our teachers so that they understand what's happening and why it's happening? And I just felt like, as a board, we might want to discuss what can we do to make our professionals feel like they are being listened to, because this is, this may be a perception problem, it may be something more, I'm not sure. But I would, would like us to entertain that, because the last thing we want is for some of our veteran teachers to get discouraged over calendar issues and leave. And I've had several from more than one school express to me that they'll leave over this.
So only, on the agenda, it lists the traditional calendar. We can talk about the morale as well, but again, I want to try to stick to the agenda as much. We're all approached by teachers in the grocery store, after meetings, everywhere, phone calls. At this time, I'd like to call Dr. Dietrich up to the podium as well. What me and Christine here learned just is what you learned after the meeting, the same discussion took place. When that meeting concluded, I think you and, one of the things you informed those teachers was?
One of the things that I mentioned in that meeting was that we appreciated looking at the 1920 calendar, but I'd already talked to some community organizations that were making plans based on that calendar. They were already putting things in place and trying to discuss personnel and budgets and things of that nature that they needed based on the school calendar, so that it, in my mind, that we would take their suggestions that they made and work on the 2021 calendar with the ideas that they had. And at that time, it seemed to be okay with everyone in the room.
So, and I do want to try to make everybody, everybody happy as we can, and listen to the ideas and discussion, but I also understand what you're saying from outside organizations and people making plans. I really don't want to keep changing things. I don't think, I mean, I don't want to, will it ever be perfect for everybody? No. But should we listen to as many as we can? Yes.
I understand. I understand that sometimes you can't make it perfect for everybody, but how can we bridge the, how can we bridge the gap with these teachers in getting them to understand the reasons why, and what can we do as a board? You know, do we need to look at the calendar again? Do we need to have more dialogue with them? How can we make, so that they understand?
I think one thing we can do, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think one thing we can do is when the calendar committee convenes, which they will, I feel like in August or September, we can actually, and this is just a suggestion, this is not a directive or anything like that, maybe we would like to ask the NCAE rep and the PENC rep to join the calendar committee. That would be just one idea thrown out there. Again, not a directive, that is up to Dr. Dietrich and Dr. Bryant. I think the other thing we can do is advertise that meeting more often, but also principals in one, correct me if I'm wrong, one calendar rep, one parent rep, and then themselves, correct?
I think that's who's invited, yes, sir.
Yes, so that's.
But at least one representative comes per school.
So at least one reps from each school.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
There are about three representatives per school, which ends up with about close to 50 folks that are invited to be part of that calendar committee, plus staff that are also involved with that. So it's probably one of the largest committees. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Dietrich.
You are correct. We at least have one member per school just about at every meeting. Sometimes we get two that come, which makes it one of those larger meetings, but that many are invited. And then another key point to remember is when Donna does such a great job communicating it out, that even if their name is given to us, they receive all the emails and the minutes from that meeting. So they don't even have to be in attendance to get everything we send out, is my understanding.
So, Dr. Dietrich, I have a question.
Sure.
This meeting that you keep referring to?
Sure.
I'm sure you're very aware of open meeting laws. The teacher's concerns was a chairman called and had them come meet with just one board member, and they assumed it went to all the teachers. So my question to you is, when was this meeting? Where are the minutes from this meeting? And was it, was it put out publicly because the perception from the teacher was, if I'm called by the chairman of the board and I'm coming to a calendar meeting, and then she said, she sent the whole email to all of us, that various members were not there? And that does include Dr. Bryant, he wasn't there as well.
So this was not a called meeting. This was a meeting just as Mrs. Sutton had afterwards for 30 minutes. There was, it was not a called meeting. It was, again, when teachers expressed concerns. As a board member, I think everyone should feel like they should listen to those concerns and hear those concerns. So this was not any violation or anything trying to.
Can I clarify? I was just approached by the group that had spoken to us earlier as I was leaving and took the time to talk to them. I didn't seek them out.
But they're saying that the board, they were under assumption, since the board chair called them and told them to come, that the whole board was aware of it. That's, that's what we're concerned.
I don't believe that is correct, because in the meeting, we agreed to the number of people that would be there. So they did, if they expected the whole board to be there, that's, I don't agree with that.
I thought you were acting on behalf of the board, sir.
And we explained to them in that meeting that.
Several times, we were, we, we're speaking as individuals, not as a board.
Because we want to hear their concerns.
We're listening.
That's it. So that, that was it. These teachers have concerns. We wanted to listen to them so that they could be better served by their board members. I encourage every board member to listen to anybody that has any issue or complaint. I know that we all get approached at grocery store after meetings, telephones, you say you get calls at 3:00 AM in the morning. So, you know, I encourage every board member to listen. So, you know, I encourage every board member to listen to any concern, just as we did. Again, we were, this is not about that meeting, but when you speak to someone, you should say, this is me as an individual. This is not me on behalf of the board. And I know that was reiterated several, several times, so.
I have no issue with that at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I seek clarification?
Yes, sir.
Or on the board? A request to have NCAE and PENC reps for our fall meetings with the county committee, is that accurate?
I would not approve of that, no.
That is, that is, I'm not making that a motion, someone else wants to, that is just an idea. So if someone else wants to make that motion, or something like-
I was just seeking clarification.
Yep, so.
And we also welcome anybody to come to that meeting, because everyone in the community should be a part of that calendar. This is not something we try to hide from people, or tell them, hey, don't give us your opinion. We want everybody's opinion at those meetings when it is voted on before, before it comes to you for a vote. So we will open that up to anybody. And I already know several people who I have talked to about it will be in the, in the calendar committee meetings next year, which is great, because that's where a lot of the conversation occurs and should occur.
All right. Further discussion?
You're doing a great job. I like the way that you get the word out there.
Thank you.
I think that's a good point.
All right, moving along to number five, Dr. Dietrich. And Ms. Sharon Spence, revised Tranway calendar.
Here we are back again. We have to add the workday at the end of the year for teachers in order to make the traditional calendar and the Tranway calendar match for finance purposes. So in order to do that, we have to put a workday at the end of the Tranway day. Do you have more specifics? We have to move it. Correct. Ms. Spence?
I may need to pull it down.
Yeah, I understand that.
As Rob said, for payroll and retirement purposes, the Tranway calendar and the traditional calendar end date for employees needs to match, and it did not this year. We will certainly be on the lookout for that next year, but our payroll people, wonderful payroll people caught that, and so what Tranway proposed to do was to move a workday at the end of the year to, into March at the beginning of an intercession in March. I think it's the 23rd.
So this doesn't affect students or parents?
No, it doesn't affect anybody, it just affects the way that payroll bills the payroll system for next year. And then Tranway also asked, and you'll see on your agenda, and they asked to move a required workday. There were two workdays at the beginning of March, they accidentally built the retired workday on Tuesday instead of, or Monday instead of Tuesday. So they wanted to give their teachers and employees that Monday as an optional workday, so that if anybody wanted to have a long weekend, then they could do that, and then that moved the retired, the required workday to the Tuesday. So those were the two changes in the Tranway calendar, and again, did not affect students or families, just the employees, and just for payroll purposes for the big change.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the calendar change as presented?
I make a motion that we approve the calendar changes as presented for Tranway Elementary School Year.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor of the revised Tranway Elementary School Year, signifies, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Motion passes. At this time, I will call for us to go into closed session, and I'll seek a motion for it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential, or not a public record under NCGS Section 143, 318, 11A1.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of result, all in favor of going to closed session, so we've seen aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Do I have a motion to return to open session?
I make a motion we return to open session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, so we've seen aye?
Aye.
We have now returned to open session. At this time, is there any motions concerning personnel?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve both the one-year and two-year administrator contracts as proposed by staff.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor approving the one-year into-year contracts for staff, so we've seen aye?
Aye.
All right, any other motions for personnel?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the one-year contracts for teachers.
Okay, we just, we got that one.
The first one was administrators.
Administrator. Wait a minute, your one and two-year was for administrators, that's okay, okay.
That was administrators.
Okay, okay, all right, now I got it. Now I got it. All right, now we're on to your one-year, you outsmarted me. Okay. All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor approving the one-year contract for teachers, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to the next personnel.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the two-year teacher contracts.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Second.
I'll take that. All in favor of the two-year contracts? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, two-year contracts, pass. Is there any other personnel motions?